Good morning, good evening, good afternoon, good evening everybody. Welcome to International Symposium on Network on Chip. Session two NOCS Modeling and Security. My name is Mayank Parashet. I am, I did my undergrad from IIT Karakto. Then did my masters and PhD from Georgia Tech. Under Professor Tushar Krishna in Sanergy Lab. And now I am working in Samsung USA. Our first session is Synful RTL Evaluation. Methodology for RTL NOCS Design. The speaker is Neil Leiva. Neil Leiva is a PhD student at University. Universitat Politécnica d'Alta-València and Research Engineer at Barcelona Super Computing Center. His current interest, research interest are network on chip design and memory hierarchies for many core system. He received the MS degree in Computer Engineering from Computing Research Center at National Polytechnic Institute of Mexico. So with that Neil, over to you for your presentation. Thanks. Okay, hello, my name is Neil Leiva. I am PhD student at Universitat Politécnica de Catalunya. Today, I would like to present the research manuscript title Synful RTL Evaluation Methodology. For RTL NOCS Designs. So for this presentation, I will start with a brief introduction where I will introduce Synful and ProSmart. I will explain the limitations found in the Synful methodology during the process of integration with ProSmart. Then I will introduce our solution called Synful RTL to mitigate the limitations of Synful. And finally, I will show the results obtained using Synful RTL and the conclusions of the research. A synthetic workload is a fast solution to evaluate network on chips. This method generates random traffic patterns. Synful introduces a methodology to generate synthetic traffic that resembles the traffic for real applications. Synful employs hierarchical Marco models with two levels, macro and microphases. Each application is employed at different models. During the simulation, each macrophase lasts 500,000 cycles. Each macrophase has a probability of occurrence and transitions. That is every 500,000 cycles. It's decided if executed, executed macrophase continues or the execution advanced to another macrophase. Also, each macrophase has its own packet injection rate and the, and the pattern, pattern, destination patterns. In the future, we can see an example of a model, in this case, for a Varnes application. The simulation always started in macrophase one. And this macrophase has a higher probability of being maintained than moving to another macrophase. For example, it only has 0.86% of moving to macrophase two. And 2.59% of moving to macrophase three. The motivation for this work was to perform an accurate evaluation of ProSmart. ProSmart is a NOCS router developed in SystemVerilog with a module to support multi-hop bypass. That is, the fleet scan skip multiple routers in the same direction in the same, in this, in a single cycle. In the future, we can see an example of the three hop lanes supported for a four by four mesh. In the case of HPC one, just one router can be skipped. In HPC Max two, up to two routers can be skipped and HPC Max three, up to two routers can be skipped. In the first integration of Synful and ProSmart. We, we detected that Synful uses a single seed value and this seed is hardcoded. We obtained the latency and throughput results in show in the future. Considering the multi-hop bypass in ProSmart, we expected to have better results for HPC Max three in both cases. However, we can see that the best results for the average latency and for the throughput are for HPC Max two. Faced with this problem, we modified the code to support a variable seed value. But the variability problem was more visible. In this figure, we can see high injection peaks in four simulations. That compromise the results producing unreliable results. In a deeper analysis, we detect that each macrophase has its injection ratio. For the case of Varnes, macrophase two has approximated H, H time more injection ratio than the other two macrophases. We also detect that the appearance of these macrophases in the same sequences is not guaranteed for short simulation times. That is, in, in the simulation with high peaks of packet injection, the macrophase two appear more times during the simulation. Other issue detected was in the transition probabilities, for example, in Varnes. We can see how macrophase three has a higher probability of occurrence, 52%. However, the simulation always starts in macrophase one and give its low probabilities of transitions to another macrophases. It's very difficult for macrophase three to appear during the first simulated macrophases. So the solution to try to guarantee that all macrophases will be simulated proportionally to their theoretical probability of occurrence. Was to increase the simulation time. We increased the time up to 400 million of cycles. The obtained resource are short in the future. The results are very interesting because it's very clear how the variability observed by the error bars is maintained in all the simulations. For this, also for these simulations, we had the following issues. The RTL model runs slower than a functional simulator. For simulations with 400 million of cycles, 39 hours were needed, resulting in a very slow and resource unresistant. This work introduced Synful RTL, which is an improvement methodology that avoids the previous issues. Synful RTL exploits the theoretical probabilities of occurrence and the injection ratio of each macrophase. To, in order to obtain an accurate results, we reduce it simulation time and resources. In Synful RTL, each macrophase is simulated separately for a short time. From the simulations, we obtained for each macrophase M, the average package latency, the standard deviation of the packet latency and the average number of packets. To obtain the overall results, a weight average is employed. The weight W of each macrophase M, that is WM, depends on the probability of occurrence and the load intensity of each macrophase. The weight WM represent the contribution of each macrophase to the results. For Synful RTL, the weight of each macrophase is calculated with the following equation. To calculate the weights. We need the average number of packets. For each macrophase M, this value is obtained from the simulations. And also, we need the probability of occurrence P of each macrophase M. This value is obtained from the models. These two values are multiplied for each macrophase. Then, the weight obtained is divided by the, by a normalizer overall number of packets. That is the addition of all weights of, of all macrophases. This value considers the contribution of all macrophases to the simulation. Well, with the weights that represent the contribution of each macrophase, the average packet latency can be simply calculated using the average. Using the following equation. This value, the average packet latency is obtained from the simulations. First, we calculate the average packet latency for each macrophase multiplying the weights by the average packet latency. Finally, to calculate the average packet latency of, of the application is an addition to the average packet latency of all macrophases. Also, to estimate the accuracy of the mechanism, we also calculate the standard deviation of the latency and the confidence interval. These equations are detailed in the manuscript. In this slide, I will explain the results obtained using. In the blue bars. We can show the results of Synful RTL. Sorry, we, we can show the results of Synful. With different simulation times from five millions cycles to 400 million cycles. A simulation was performed using 10 seeds. In the purple blocks, we can show the results for Synful RTL. For Synful RTL, we simulate only 10 million cycles and five seeds. In order to reduce the computational resources and the simulation time. Also, we have another simulation named Synful RTL IDR. Where the time and the number of seeds were increased to reduce the error bars until negligible. Here, we simulate 200 million of cycles, of cycles and 26. We evaluate Synful RTL with different number of seeds and iterations of macrophases. First, we evaluate the packet, the impact of the number of seeds in the simulations. We can see how after five seeds, the error bars is very similar in all the cases. Then, we evaluate the impact of the number of iterations of macrophases. We can see how the number of iterations increases and the error bar decreases. So after 20, 20 iterations, that is 10 million of cycles, the error bar is less than 1%. Now, we can see how Synful RTL is very close to the idea with a difference lower than 1% in all the cases. This result was obtained using a lower simulation time and fewer seeds. While the results from Synful differ by up to 3% in all the cases. Here, here we have an interesting thing in Varnes, in HPC Max two. 400 million cycles were not enough to get closer to the idea. While Synful RTL is closer with a very small, small error bar. And here we have the results for all the models available in Synful using Synful RTL, the Synful RTL methodology. And now, I, I will explain the conclusions. And this works analyzed limitations found in Synful, in Synful during the integration with ProSmart. One of them was large variability in the generated traffic producing, producing unreliable results. A solution to mitigate the variability are these simulations with long execution time. Synful RTL is a solution that exploit the theoretical probabilities of occurrences and the injection ratio for each macrophase with short simulations. Synful RTL reduce time to solution by up, by up to 40, 40 times when an error lower than 1%. Okay, and it is, thank you for listening in my presentation.
Thank you Neil, very nice presentation.
Thanks.
And now we can take any questions. So I have one question. We talked about macrophases. I'm curious how you decide number, I guess it's a standard, maybe a standard technique to decide number of macrophases and how long, like what is present in those macrophases.
The, the, the macrophases was evaluated and in the Synful original methodology. So now, so we only use the models available in, in the Synful. And these models have the, the size of each macrophase and the number of macrophases for, for the applications. Some applications have two macrophases, another three, five and nine, nine macrophases. But this is described by the, by the, by the model.
Great. So I guess we don't have any more questions, so we thank our speaker Neil. Thank you for your presentation. And now we move on to our next talk, which is paper two. Eavesdropping Attack Detection Using Machine Learning in Network on Chip Architectures. The speaker is Chamika Sudhoshinghe. Chamika Sudhoshinghe is a final year undergraduate student in the Department of Computer Science Engineering. At the University of Moratua, Sri Lanka. His research interests include network on chip security and machine learning. So with that, over to you Chamika for your paper presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayank. Hope I am audible and you can see my screen.
Yes, we can.
A very good morning, good afternoon and good evening to everyone. So in this paper, we are talking about eavesdropping attack detection using machine learning in network on chip architecture. This is a collaborative work done by myself, Dr. Charles and Dr. Hangama from University of Moratua, Professor Mistra from University of Florida. My talk is organized as follows. First, I'm going to introduce why eavesdropping attacks are important. Then I'm going to talk about what has been done so far. Next, I'm going to present our work followed by the experimental results and finally I will conclude. So. Let's first get to know about network on chips. We all know that edge computing devices and IoT devices are rising dramatically in numbers. It is believed that by 2025, there will be 75 billion IoT devices. System on chips are at the brain of these old devices. When we zoom into a system on chip, we can visualize it as multiple hardware components working together. For example, it can be processor one and processor two and a GPU running multiple tasks of a same program such as gaming. With the advancement of the technology over the last decade, the number of components inside a system on chip is rising up to more than 100 intellectual property cores. In other words, IP cores. The network on chip abbreviated as the NOCS comes as the scalable communication subsystem for system on chips. So let us talk about why the security of network on chip is important. The main goal of a device manufacturer is to optimize their time to market. For example, people expect all popular mobile phone companies to release a new model of their flagship phone each and everywhere at the very same time. So these manufacturers outsource their earlier discussed hardware components to third parties. This long and distributed supply chain dramatically increased the security vulnerabilities. Such as an insertion of a hardware Trojan by a third party IP vendor. This raises critical concerns about the security of the NOCS. So the security of the NOCS must be addressed. One such vulnerability that can happen within a NOCS is an eavesdropping attack. Let me explain this attack using a four by four mesh NOCS diagram as an example. Eavesdropping attack is an attack that listens to confidential information passing through a NOCS when other IP cores are communicating with each other. These attackers passively listen to on-chip communication in an attempt to steal information with intention of leaking information. As you can see here, a malicious router intercepts the communication between the source and destination and leaks information. Different types of counter measures have been proposed to deal with eavesdropping attacks. For eavesdropping attack mitigation, authentication and encryption, information obfuscation and additional validation checks are some of the existing approaches. For detection, stop trojans from triggering, traffic latency monitoring, traffic analytics and statistical profiling are some of the techniques. These existing methods have produced promising results, but they are applicable for fixed application. Hence, these are not suitable when there are variations in applications or inputs. Our proposed approach essentially addresses all these limitations. We propose a machine learning based attack detection methodology. This is the threat model for our, for our application. Here, a Trojan infected router copying packets and sending information to malicious application running on an IP to launch, launch an eavesdropping attack. The hardware Trojan is placed in the input buffer of a router. When it comes to our proposed methodology, we have three phases. Design time, training time and runtime. In design time, we craft features and design routers, router probes for our approach. In training time, we basically trying to build machine learning models offline. In runtime, we are using the trained machine learning models to classify attacks when system is in operation. During runtime, we use a collective decision making strategy to involve all the selected routers to determine whether there is an attack is taking place or not. The result of the collective decision making strategy is the aggregated likelihood of an attack taking place in the system. We use this algorithm which is called the eavesdropping sensing algorithm to select the set of routers in which the machine learning models will be running for a given time period. As illustrated in this example, we have considered router zero, router one, router two and router six as the routers which machine learning models are running based on the output of the algorithm. These are some of the major steps that we followed when building our mechanism. We first extracted data from the simulation, generated new features, processed the data, trained the evaluated models. Train, train, train the evaluated models and finally deployed the models to make predictions. Since the features are very important in this process, let me zoom into feature extract. When it comes to the extracted features, we extract features by position, packet such as, position such as, position of the packet such as routers, import and output. And according to the data such as split type, packet type. And finally, according to the path such as destination and source. And when it comes to feature generation, we generated features by a packet hop, traversal and packet count. Now I am going to present the experimental results. Let's get familiar with the experimental setup. We conducted our experiments using GANET two model integrated with GEM5 simulator. The applications were run on four by four mesh NOCS model implemented using XY routing with wormhole switching. To evaluate the robustness of the MLB's approach, we used a wide variety of training and testing configuration. Let me zoom into one of the example scenarios to give you an idea about execution scenario one. Here, for an example, in the normal scenario, we have considered N zero fifteen, we have two malicious. We have two non-malicious application running on IP zero and IP fifteen. And in the attack scenario, we have the two non-malicious applications and apart from that, we have two malicious route. We have a malicious router intercepting traffic at router two and sending it to router fourteen where we have a malicious attacker IP. And similar to the attack scenario, in the test cases, we have different combinations of malicious routers and applications running in different, different IPs and routers. Our train and test configurations cover the different application execution within NOSI environment. To identify which ML model performs the best for our given architecture and threat model, we compared the performance of multiple ML models. Logistic regression, MLP neural networks, decision trees, random forest and XGBoost classifier. These are some of the methods that we have considered. By evaluating these models, we have identified that nonlinear models perform better than the linear ones. XGBoost had the highest accuracy for training and validation. For the selected ML model, we explored the accuracy against the snooping percentage and identified that the best region ranges from 25% of snooping and above. And finally, to show our results in our approach of the capability of detecting eavesdropping attack. We have identified that our approach can detect eavesdropping attack with high accuracy. In runtime, irrespective of the number of placements of MIPs, malicious IPs and number of applications running. In the concluding remarks, I would like to point out the following things. Eavesdropping attacks is a major concern in the NOSI architectures. Existing approaches rely on highly predictable traffic patterns and fixed application setups. Unlike the existing approaches, our approach can handle diverse applications with input variations and application mapping. Our experimental results show that our approach is capable of detecting eavesdropping attacks with high accuracy in wide variety of scenarios. You all are welcome to look our research paper to get more information about what we have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you Chamika, very nice presentation. And now we can take questions. So I have one question related to this, it's a very nice work. Have you checked how, for example, if these applications are running and there is an operating system? If operating system moves application to different cores, do you think it affects your algorithm present in hardware?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. So Mayank, as of now, what we have looked into is, we have considered about number of applications running within the network on chip. So I explained about the most simplest scenario where there are like two applications running in two IP cores. And we have also extended the two, four, four and five IP goes running in our execution scenario three, if I zoom into that. So as of now, what we have done was we have experimented it using multiple IPs running at the very same time. So when it comes to an operating system, what we can say is, if there is an application running in a particular IP which is independent from this attack. It is also considered, so that's as of now, that's the progress that we have made. It's not particularly an operating system, but a multiple applications running at the very same time. So this is like the execution scenario three, we have five applications running across the network on chip environment.
Okay, great. So looks like we do not have any other question. So we thank our speaker for this nice presentation. Thank you. And now we move on to next paper, which is BHT NOCS Blaming Hardware Trojan in NOSI Routers by Shrisendu Das. And Dr. Shrisendu Das is an assistant professor at the Department of CSC, Indian Institute of Technology, Roper. He has joined the institute in June 2018. Previously, he was an assistant professor at the Indian Institute of Information Technology, Gauhati. He did MTEC and PhD from Indian Institute of Technology, Gauhati. His research interests include hardware security, multi-core cache architectures, memory systems, and network on chip. With that, Dr. Shri Shendu Das, over to you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayank, for the nice introduction. Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening to everyone. First, please let me share my screen. My screen is visible?
Yes.
Okay, so the title of this talk is BHT NOC: Blaming Hardware Trojans in NOC Routers. So, I'll start this presentation with a small introduction with tile-based CMP or TCMP. So, in TCMP, there are normally there are multiple tiles and each tile has its own core. It has a private L one cache and there is a L two bank there in each tile. And the tiles are connected with the network on chip here, you can see. So, normally, this, the L one cache is a private for each core, but this L two bank is actually divided, it's actually distributed, but it is shared. So, for example, it may happen like this, that if this core requests for a block, then it will first search in its local L one. And if there is a miss in local L one, then it will, it has to fetch the block from, it may fetch to block from other tile also because if there is a miss in L one, then the block need to be fetched from L two banks. And then, first of all, it will map to a bank based on its bank index. So, if the bank index is, for example, here, it's fifteen, then instead of, if there is a miss in L one, then the request has to traverse through the NOC and go to the tile fifteen. And from the L two bank at tile fifteen, from that bank, it needs to fetch the block. So, that's because of that, the performance of NOC is very important for the better performance of the entire TCMP because all the, most of the time, the request and response flows through this NOC. So, here in this diagram, this, this small circles are to present the NOC routers. But in the next, in the right side diagram, here what I am showing is the rectangle set router. And we are not showing the tiles in the right side diagram. So, the diagram that I am showing in right side, this diagram, I'll use this diagram throughout this presentation here. So, we'll assume all these rectangles here as the router and, but we'll assume that it's a NOC of TCMP where the tiles are not showing actually. Okay, so there are, from last few years, people are exploring many security aspects or security issues of NOC and as well as the countermeasures of NOC. Some of the areas where people are working is eavesdropping, data integrity, denial of service attack, data leakage, or timing channel attacks, etc. So, the work that I am presenting here, it's kind of, it's type of a denial of service attack. It's the attack that, that we'll discuss or the kind of attack that we'll discuss in this paper and not doing any data leakages or not doing any kind of site channel or coverage channel attack. But it is, it is doing something such that the performance of the NOC or as well as the entire system is decreasing. So, the term hardware Trojan is, I think it's very well-known to all the audience in this platform. And I think the previous speakers also very, explained it properly that what are the possibilities of hardware Trojan and how hardware Trojan can be available in a chip which is there in the market. So, just for a quick recap, I'll just, I'll mention it here that that these hardware trojans are actually the malicious logical, malicious circuit installed in a chip that may be installed by a third party IPs or maybe someone else in some other way. But the hardware Trojan means there is a, there is a circuit or malicious circuit present in the chip. So, if there is a hardware Trojan present in a router, then we term it here as ST router. Maybe it's not a standard term, but in this paper, we use the term called ST router. If a router has a malicious chip or malicious circuit or a hardware Trojan. So, the term is called ST router here. So, what ST router can do? So, the, this, the term or this, the, the ST router that we discuss here is taken from the paper that I have cited here. So, in this paper, they introduce this, this type of hardware Trojan. So, assume that this is the source and this is the destination. And we are also assuming here X-Y routing protocol, so the data should flow through like this. But assume that this router is a ST router or this router has an ST. So, what is the purpose of this ST, ST router? This ST router may, may, what you can say, may misroute the packet. Instead of, for example, now, the packet has arrived in ST. So, instead of sending it to this router because D one is here, this, this ST can send it to its left side. If it sends it to the left side, then left, the left side router will again send it back to ST because of the X-Y routing and it, it can ping pong here. Or if the ST router can send it to the right side, then again, the same type of ping ponging may happen. So, if the ST can do that, then instead of sending in the proper direction, if it's the reflect or deflect the packet in another direction, in wrong direction, then it may happen that packet will never arrive to D one. It may happen. So, this may saturate the NOC much, much faster. And there is another example, maybe suppose this is source and destination is here, source and destination, and maybe the package, and there is a ST here. So, as per X-Y routing, the packet should go, first go to ST and then from ST, it should go to the right side. But if ST sent it to upper side, then it will follow this longer path and go, reach to destination. So, there are some extra delays. So, this type of attack possible through this ST router here. So, here, the purpose is that this, this kind of ST routers are not doing any much damage. It's just reflecting the packet in the wrong direction or is sending the packet in the wrong direction. So, this, as I mentioned, this attack is already proposed and is proposed in this paper that I cited here. So, then the same, same way, they also propose the countermeasure for this technique. So, suppose there is a source here and destination, same source and destination, and there is a hardware Trojan here, and there is a packet sent to hardware Trojan. And now, when the hardware doesn't send a packet to wrong direction because at, at this moment, the hardware Trojan should, this, this red router should send the packet to the right side, right router. But instead of that, the router sent it to the upper direction, so which is a wrong direction. So, since all the router knows that the routing protocol follows is X-Y routing, then, and because of that, based on the source and destination ID stored in the head plate, this router that is marked as X, this router can easily find out that, okay, this packet should not come to me. So, whoever sent this packet to me must be a hardware Trojan. So, in this, in this sense, this router X can detect that ST or the red, red router is a hardware Trojan. So, what, what it will do after this, since it has detected that the ST is a hardware Trojan, so it will pass this information to all the neighbors of this, this red router. That see, I have received some wrong message from this red router. So, this router is a malicious router. So, it will pass this information to all these neighboring routers of this red router. And now, what happened is, they, they'll create a shield through this hardware Trojan. Now, all the communication will go through this direction, they'll ignore the hardware router. So, this, this is kind of creating a shield around this, this hardware Trojan. So, this is the existing countermeasures and they, they call this paper technique as sector. Okay, so now, if we observe properly here, the, there is a problem may, may arise here is that since these other, other, other gray routers here, except the router marked X, they are believing the alert message that is sending by X, right? The X is saying that, see, I have observed that the ST is a hardware Trojan and the other routers are kind of believing it and they are creating a shield. So, that's, that's the point. And from here, we propose something called BHT or blaming hardware Trojan. So, what this blaming hardware Trojan is do, this is also a hard kind of hardware Trojan, but it's may not do any malicious activity like misrouting a packet. It will not do like this. Instead, it will just blame others as they are ST routers. For example, if I go back here, if this, this router X, if, if this, this router X sends some message to this neighboring router, that see, I have, I detected that this router, this is a router, this red router is in, it's a ST router, but without getting any detection. So, it may happen. So, in that case, it is blaming something else, someone else. So, this is how it will work. Suppose this is a router where it is a BHT router, its main purpose is to blame someone else. So, suppose it wants to blame the right side, left side router. So, I mark it as red. So, suppose it wants to blame this red side router. So, what it will do, it will send some alert message to the neighbors here. That see, I think the red router is a ST router. Same, in same way, if this BHT router wants to blame the right router, then what it will do, it will send some message to its neighbor of this, this router. And now you can see the, as per the existing countermeasure, there will be a bigger size of shield here, right? But this shield is unnecessary because this, these two routers that is marked red here, this and these, the two side of BHT, they are actually innocent routers. But someone just blamed them, just someone just framed them that they are router, they are Trojan, right? And because of that, that blame, there is a shield created outside, outside these routers. So, now, the performance will be decreased much more because of, because of all the misrouting will happen. So, the performance will be drastically reduced. So, we have shown it in our experiment section that the performance decreased drastically. Yeah, the another problem, this same example here, this, the right side is also the same example. But here you can see, if BHT can also isolate router here, suppose this router V can be isolated also. For example, here, these two router, the two, two red router here, this, this two red router. If BHT can blame these two router as ST or ST router, then what will happen? There will be shield created outside that and because of that shield, this router V can be isolated. And if we, if we want to communicate with this B, then we have to go for special permission and we have to go through this, this, this router, otherwise that is, it will be isolated. And if one router is isolated, then there is a tile also connected with it because it's a TCMP architecture. So, that tile will be completely isolated. So, this, this will be challenge how to, how to handle this. Okay, so these are the consequences of BHT. If the, instead of ST router, if there is a BHT router present in this, at this NOC, then what, what, what can happen? Can generate multiple false ST routers, it's, a packet would unnecessarily take long path, increase packet network latency, increase network congestion, will create injection suppression problem and can also isolate a portion of chip that I have just explained that it can also isolate a time. So, that, that is one part of our proposal that we first explored that there, there may be, there may be kind of hardware Trojan possible that who can blame others and it will misuse the other existing technique. There are some other existing countermeasures already there, but this BHT can, will misuse the other existing countermeasures and it will create another type of attacks. So, that, that was our first part proposing a counter, just a new kind of attack. And now that this here, I'll explain, we also propose a countermeasures of, for BHT also and we call it as CBHT. So, I'll explain this countermeasure with this diagram here. There are two routers here, BR and R, so I'll explain with these two. So, I'll, I'll assume two things. First, I'll assume that this BR is, is a BHT router, suppose. Then if BR is a BHT router, then suppose it can blame that, that R is a router. Without, maybe R is innocent, but BR will blame that R is a ST router and that, and this message will be passed to all this, all this, all this router. That see, R is a, R is a ST router or R, R is a ST. But R is actually innocent. It may happen, right? So, in that case, what will happen, that all, it will send a message to all and that, that there may be a shield created outside the R, which is actually not correct. There may be other case also. In other case, assume that the BR is also innocent, it is not, not a BHT, but R is actually a ST. So, in that case, sometime R may send a wrong message to this BR. When R will send a wrong message to this BR, as per the existing countermeasure, that is not our work. As per the existing technique only, this BR will detect, assume that BR is innocent. So, BR will detect that, okay, R has sent a wrong message to me, so R must be hardware Trojan. So, in that case, this BR will also send a signal to all this, that see, R is a, R is a hardware Trojan. So, now, where is the problem? The problem is not for BR or R, the problem is for this, this, this neighboring router like one, two, three, four, five, six, and AR. So, these routers are receiving alerts from BR. These alerts may be correct or may not be correct. When they will be correct, when BR is innocent and R is a actual router, then the information that they are receiving is correct, that okay, R is a router, it is a, R is a hardware Trojan. But if R is innocent and BR is a BHT router, then the information that these routers, one, two, three, four, five, six, and AR, this, this router is receiving, this message is actually wrong, it is blaming someone. So, these routers has no idea to check that whether this information that they are receiving is correct or not. So, so that's why our countermeasure said, the router in SR. SR means, if, if this is R, then SR means all the routers of its neighbors. This we are representing as SR. So, the router in SR does not fully trust that threat information received from BR. So, the BR, if maybe it is innocent or maybe it's a BHT. So, when this will send a threat information to all these routers, these router will not fully trust this. Because if they fully trust it, then it is the existing solution of sector and they will create a shield around R. But we already, I have already explained the problems of it. So, if they don't fully trust, then what, what they can do? So, so this is the solution. Even after receiving a threat information from BR, the routers in SR does the following. So, suppose this, this two has already received a threat information from BR that R is a, R is a ST router, but it may be framed also. So, what this tool will say, when there is a packet arrives to this router and the next destination is R, then it will check, this tool will first check whether this packet is a deflector packet or not. If it is not a deflector packet, then it will send it to R. But if it is a deflector packet, then it will not send to R. That is our, our policy, only this modification. So, what is the deflector packet? Suppose this source S one is sending a packet to D one. So, suppose this BR has deflected it to this side or in a red side or light side. Then all these routers here can easily detect that, okay, this packet is a deflector packet. Why? Because the router is X-Y routing here. So, if the routing is fixed, that X-Y routing, there should not, there should not be any X direction movement, right? To go from S one to D one, that should be only straight line movement, right? But if this BR deflected itself to this, this side or in the other side, then it is, it is possible to detect that if this packet is deflected or not. So, this is our solution, that in any router, if it will find that if the packet is not deflected, then we'll ignore all the alert message and it will send it through this R. And if this packet is deflected, then we'll trust the, the, the router who sent us this message that, and we'll, we'll, we'll send it, I will skip the R and send it through, through the other, other routers to this station. So, this is our kind of countermeasures of CBHT here. So, initially, we also thought a countermeasure like that, that since they cannot trust each other, then let us just do like that, that if BR, if a router receives that actual Trojan, then it will not send through R by other concern. But this type of, if we go for this type of solutions, then, then on top of that, there may be one more blaming hardware Trojan can be created. So, we dropped that idea. So, this is the experimental setup. We use Garnet and module of GEM5, but then off-size is eight cross eight and workloads are synthetic and spec CPU. These are the mixes. Some more properties of experimental setup are shown here. And for implementation of TCMP system, we have implemented all this TCMP system. Here, M means the machine or you can say the TCMP architecture. So, M baseline means this TCMP architecture. Here, it is showing as four cross four, but in our simulation, it is actually eight cross eight. So, this is the baseline CMP and where the NOC has, of, the NOC of this TCMP has no hardware Trojan. So, this is M baseline. So, and this is, MM ST router is that, this is a TCMP, it is a new TCMP where the NOC has one ST router which can misroute the packet. Then M sector is the proposed technique that is done in this paper. So, MM sector means that there is a NOC where there can be a ST router, but as well as there is a mitigation of this ST router is also there, means the creation of shield technique is there in M sector. Then MBHT is a, is again another TCMP where its NOC is, has the technique of sector implemented. But in, in that NOC, there may be a BHT router also present. So, which will misuse the behavior of sector and try to blame someone else. So, in MBHT, there are two architecture again we use. MBHT two means it will play, the MB, it will blame two neighbors and MBHT three means it will blame three neighbors. And MCBHT is a technique where, which is our proposed countermeasure for MBHT. So, if we go for experimental results, these are the synthetic results. And here you can see that this is the blue color is baseline and this are the average packet injection means effective average packet latencies. So, you can see that the baseline has low latency. Obviously, the baseline should have low latency because it has no hardware Trojan in baseline. And MBHT three is the highest latency. Obviously, MBHT three must have highest latency because it is blaming three routers unnecessarily. So, there is a shield creating, right, in MBHT three. So, the MBHT three is degrading the performance a lot. But there is a, there is a difference here that sector and MBHT two. So, sometimes sector performance, latency of sector is higher than MBHT two. It's, it's happened in some cases. So, but in the sector, there is only one hardware Trojan, right? And in MBHT two, there are two routers which are blamed. So, basically, MBHT two should, performance should much worse as compared to sector. But what is happening in sector is So basically, M B S T two should uh performance should much worse as compared to sector, but what is happening in sector is. In sector, the H T that they use is a real H T. So uh it may may reflect some row of some packet. Which is originating from H T. Maybe from this router, a packet is starting. So this is the source. From the source, only a packet may go in wrong direction. It is possible in sector because they assume that it's H T. But in B S T two, those are framed routers, right? They are not actually H T, they are framed. So they will not misroute the packet which is originated from from that router. So that's why an M B S T two. Is somehow giving a better results means less congestion. But when we'll go for framing more than two routers, then obviously the performance is going more. Is degrading. So obviously, when we'll go for, as we said, our first part is blaming. So when we blame on uh more routers, then performance is degrading. But if we see the counter method that we propose is called M C V S T, then M C V S T is again uh again reducing this overhead. And so if we go to the real benchmarks here and if we concentrate on this first diagram here, the first part, figure A. Then in figure A, what we did is we assume one B S T router. So in one B S T router, I'm just explaining this part. So you can see here. If we go for sector, the sector uh the average packet latency is four point seven percent, we assume. So if we go for M B S T two and M B S T three, then see in M B S T three, the performance, the latency increased to nine point seven nine. Because it is blaming three rotors and because of blaming three rotors, the uh latency increased to nine point seven nine percent as compared to baseline. But when we apply our counter measure, then after applying our counter measure, the overhead is the latency is just two point six percent more than the baseline. So it's kind of a uh uh significant improvement uh of uh uh on top of this B S T. And in the right side, this is a uh this is a diagram where we compare two B S T rotors. Means in N O C, instead of one B S T, there are two B S T. So and both can blame of uh both can blame at max uh three router. So there at max there can be six router. Uh blamed in the N O C. So you can see uh if we go for M B S T three here, where almost six row means six routers are blamed, then. The performance degrade by fifteen percent as compared to baseline. But if we again even in in that also, if we apply M C V S T that the counter measure. Then performance degree is only a degradation is only four point four five percent. So again, this is a simple significant improvement. Uh as or you can say for uh in the counter measures as compared to B S T. So this is the experiment of the deflected packets because some packets will deflect uh because of this hard at rosons and all, but there may be the all packets will not deflect. So this uh diagrams is only a diagram or this result is only for uh uh the average latency of the deflected packets, affected average. Deflected packet latency. So if you see here in real workloads, you can see uh for deflected packets, only the average latency goes to thirty six percent. As compared to baseline in uh in uh in B S T, in B S T, who which is blaming other rotors. But uh when we apply our counter measure, then this uh this degradation reduces to only five percent uh five percent, yeah. So I have not shown, I think for any slide here for a harder uh overhead, but the harder one it is not much significant for uh for proposing the counter measure. So uh this slide is for B S T in other route routing technique and counter measures. Because the B S T uh uh idea or the H T routing technique that we implemented here, as well as that we assume from uh from the existing techniques. All assume two things that this uh routing technique is deterministic routing. And of uh and it's also in deterministic routing, it is an X Y routing technique. So but the same policy that we that we discuss here, that the same thing can also easily possible to implement for any other deterministic routing techniques. But uh the uh proposed B S T that is blaming hard at rojan can apply for other counter measures also, which is not directly just related to. Misrotting and something else. If it is working for some other, if there is some other counter measures also there. Who who depends on this type of things that once detected a lot uh uh something and it is alerting some other rotors and those rotors are believing it. If this type of things are there, then on top of that, a blaming harder trojan can be detect, uh it can be can be proposed. So this this can uh we we left it for future work that uh how uh this B S T can be framed on other type of attacks. And if uh also if the routing technique is not deterministic, if it is something else, then how this B S T can be framed on top of that. So those we left as future work here. So in the conclus- conclusion, I'll say that we proposed a new harder trojan. Which is called B S T for N O C rotors that uh misuse the existing counter measures. And how it misuse, it simply blames other innocent rotors and this existing counter measure take actions and that's why uh the performance degrade more. So uh so that is our first part and the second part, you also propose a counter measure for this B S T that is called C B S T and we saw that. Uh this C B S T can reduce the overhead of B S T. But yes, there is a limitation also that I have not explained that in some slide I've explained that B S T can isolate a tile also. But that tile isolation problem cannot be resolved by C B S T. So that is again a. Uh still is open, so maybe you will do it in future that I will think about it that how the tile that is isolating by B S T can be can be handled. Okay, so thank you. Uh that's it. And now I'm open for questions.
Uh thank you, Dr. Shirshendu. Uh is there any question? Alright, so looks like there is no question. Uh so in interest of time, uh we will move on to next presentation. Thank you uh for your presentation. And our next uh paper is Noicer, mitigating NOX side channel attacks using. Encrypted addresses and remapping. Uh speaker is Anrakkar. Anrakkar is a PhD student in computer science at Georgia Tech. He completed his undergraduate degree in E C E from Indian Institute of Technology, Kharakpur in India. He then spent three years in the industry working for ARM and Intel before joining Georgia Tech. He is a member of the High Performance Architecture Lab, H P Ark at Georgia Tech. And is advised by Professor Hason Kim. With that, Anrak, over to you for your presentation.
Thanks, man. Let me just. My screen visible?
Yes.
Right, uh second. So, hi everyone. Uh my name is Anrakkar and I'm a first year PhD student at Georgia Tech. Uh I'll be presenting my work on Noicer, which is a system level approach to mitigating timing based NOX side channel attacks. Uh this work was done within collaboration with my colleagues at Georgia Tech, Shuang Liu, Young He Kim, Gurat Seleshwar, Tashakrishna and Hassan Kim. So what really is the a time set, so timing side channel attack on the NOC? Uh so a side channel attack in general observes certain side effects such as timing differences to infer secret information. Uh in the case of a cache side channel meta, for example, by measuring the timing of a load operation, we can infer if it is present in a certain cache set. Uh prime plus probe is such a cache side channel attack. However, in the case of a NOC, the shared resource is either a shared interconnect link uh or a shared destination slice for the traffic. Uh if you can, if you see in the figure on the left, then uh you can see that. But based on whether or not the victim core is transmitting data on the shared interconnect link. The spy core can infer if whether a bit zero was transmitted or a bit one was transmitted. And this this difference uh in latency is very clearly observable. If you see from our Garnet uh two point zero simulation results. The latency without link contention and the latency with link contention are completely different. So this uh difference can be easily observed. And the two kinds of contention are shown here in this figure. Uh one is uh contention on the destination slice. Uh and the other is the contention on this shared interconnected. And this this kind of an attack has already been demonstrated uh on the ring interconnect and the machine to connect in these two papers over here. So just to give some background before I actually describe our design, uh so in. Modern S O Cs, generally we have a static hash function which selects the L L C slides based on the physical address. For example, uh from this table, uh from the reverse engineering work done by Yaromitol. Uh they show that each architecture generation of Intel processors have a static hash function, uh something like this. So with enough trials, it is possible to figure out which physical addresses map to the same L L C slices or to different L L C slices. But they can ca- call overlap on the uh shared interconnect. Uh the nail in the coffin really is the fact that uh S O Cs within a certain architecture generation are immediately rendered vulnerable. Like all units are immediately rendered vulnerable once somebody reverse engineers just one unit. That's the there's a immediate need to add more resilience to uh this kind of reverse engineering attack. So for example, if P A one maps to this L L C slice and P A two maps to this L L C slice, that's it, like this is static and that's always gonna be the case. Uh so on to some existing uh approaches that have been used for mitigation. A common technique that is used is time based partitioning. Uh the very basic of basic of which is time division multiplexing or T D M A. Uh which is just a simple time division multiplex NOC. Uh T D M A requires packet to uh from each security domain to wait for its turn at every hop. Thus significantly increasing the average network latency uh to partition the NOC in time to avoid contention. Uh another work is SurfNOC uh at presented at S C A thirteen, which takes a T D M A as a base. But implements some smart packet scheduling, which schedules the packet in sort of a wave life pattern. And requires the pa- packets to only wait at turns and at egress and uh and ingress. Although there are some more techniques like sentry NOC, which uses a statically scheduled T D M NOC. Uh R P S L, which assigns higher priority to low security traffic, but but. Throttles high security traffic to provide a unidirectional protection from high security to low security. And finally, we have some related defenses, Caesar, Caesar S and Mirage. Which are randomization based defensive, but for cash timing side channel attacks and not knock uh side channel attacks. So this table sort of summarizes. The existing work and what 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 they provide and what they do not provide. So we see that the first. Four really provide NOC security, but also require a significant modification to the NOC hardware because. You know, they are proposing drastic changes to the scheduling policies. Uh and Caesar, Caesar F and Mirage. They don't require NOC hardware modifications, but they're not really protecting against NOC side channel attacks and they're more focused on cash security. So. What what do we do, right? So the key inspiration for our work really is this. Uh what if we implement a randomization based technique to the entire system instead of just within an L L C slice and provide system wide security support? Which encapsulates the NOC. Uh so that leads us to propose our work nicer, which is the NOC integrated with cache encryption and remapping. Uh our mechanism uses a karma block cipher, which is a low latency block cipher. It's already in use by ARM CPUs for point authentication code generation. Uh however, in practice, any low latency block cipher will work, but it's an implementation uh choice that we make. Uh and the P A is encrypted before the slide selection hash function, which is important to note. Uh which effectively randomizes the input of the hash function and and randomizes the output. Uh so essentially scrambling the mapping. Uh moreover, after a set number of accesses to the L L C subsistence, the encryption keys changed, which randomizes the P A. The physical address to L C slice mapping again, making it extremely hard for an attacker to reverse engineering. Uh this figure here shows how after remapping uh the contention uh may move. Or may not exist anymore, uh thus uh making orchestrating a side channel attack really, really hard. So this is just a flow chart which sort of shows our mechanism. So we have the encryption. Uh we propose uh. Adding these extra slide, one counter per L C slice, a slice access counter, which just counts the number of accesses to a slice. And we define something called a SAT, which is a slice access threshold, which is basically. The num- the number of accesses to any L L C slice, after which a new key will be used for the encryption. However, whenever we use a new key for encryption, we need to make sure that we invalidate the cache lines and write back dirty lines to memory. Because the old mapping is no longer relevant or no longer true. So we need to do this uh every time we do this remapping. So this really is the major source of performance overhead uh and we will evaluate it uh you know in some of the next slides. So quickly on to the evaluation. So we define contention uh with this formula, which is a ratio of latency difference and the baseline latency. Uh we notice, we noticed that without Noicer, the contention histogram over all possible configurations of attacker and victim so uh you know. Source and destination is quite peaky and it's very easy to see where the the contention uh you know. Exists and take advantage of that fact. However, after using Noicer with the SAT value of thousand, you see that this histogram is. Much more spread out over all possible configurations, right? So we see basically. A peak distribution without Noicer and a flatter and amortized distribution with Noicer. So the key. Observation here is that Noicer really doesn't aim to resolve contention altogether like previous works too, where they want to remove contention. We we acknowledge that using shared resources effectively is essential for modern interconnect networks. And we aim to amortize the contention over all possible permutations, so that it just becomes that much harder for an attacker to orchestrate an attack. Uh we show about ninety two percent improvement in contention variance, uh rather than actual mean contention. And uh because we don't have uh any different scheduling, we don't uh incur. We really don't incur virtually no network latency overhead compared to uh something like T D M or surf where the because of the waiting at each hop. The network latency overhead is quite high. So uh we we observe only about seven point three eight percent performance degradation. We evaluate it on maximum uh using this configuration uh or for spec CPU twenty seventeen benchmarks. Uh we do notice that the L L C misses is quite high for Noicer, which is expected because we are invalidating cache lines. Uh however, we noticed that the A mat, that is the average memory access time, is actually lower than surf and T D M A. And that is because even though. We have higher L L C misses, uh the L L C latency is kept low because of uh how our mechanism works. Uh so we're overall, we're able to keep a lower average memory access time and it will only scale better with. Uh increasing network sizes as surf now and T D M get worse because that our network latency will uh scale linearly. So sort of just completing the table I showed earlier, we show that Noicer. Uh can provide NOC security. So it can also provide cash security. It's it's easy to see how it's because it's just. Effectively cash randomization brought up a level. It's easy to uh see that by just tuning. The remapping rate, it it can be used to provide cash security. However, we don't explicitly discuss that in our papers. Uh but that can be left to future work to fine tune that implementation. And it requires no NOC hardware modifications. So absolutely nothing. The NOC is agnostic of any of this happening. It doesn't even know. That this uh encryption is taking place and it just continues to function uh as usual. So, thank you, and I'm open to taking any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Anrak. Uh is there any questions for Anrak?
Hello, Anrak, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So uh here, uh since you are uh remapping the bank indexes, I think so bank mapping are changing, right?
Right.
Um yeah, so if the number of uh L L C slices are more, then uh this uh how the. Overhead will be because you need to reconfigure every time you've changed the encryption key, right?
Yes, that's correct. Uh so every every time the encryption key is changed, uh we, yes, we change the mapping. So which is why our L L C misses are just real quite high. Uh so every time you do the mapping, effectively you will have a whole bunch of. Uh memory accesses missing uh the uh you know, getting a miss in the L L C. So. That is really the major cause of a performance overhead, which is why it probably doesn't perform as well as you would expect. Uh but uh there are techniques, so we haven't explored those, but there exist techniques like gradual mapping. Or skewed mapping uh which uh aim to bring down this kind of uh.
That.
Overhead that basically.
Policies are used in Caesar for uh local banks, means they are inside the bank, how gradual ma- gradual mappings and all they use in Caesar. But I was just curious that instead of sixteen slide, if there are sixty four slides, then I think uh that it will be more challenging to reconfigure every time. Because.
I think that would depend on the workload. Uh and I I don't think it would be. Significantly worse. It would depend on what kind of accesses the workload is doing. Maybe some workloads might perform worse and some.
Yeah.
Might might not have that much of a difference, but uh good question. I mean, I we. So these simulations take really long time. Uh huh. So we. So we we didn't evaluate, uh we didn't do that kind of. So we we didn't evaluate, uh we didn't do that kind of an evaluation where you know, we're reading the number of.
Every everyone who use Gem Five must understand, we understand it.
So it takes days. Uh but but that's a good question and I think that can be, it can be interesting to explore and see what kind of effect. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there any other question for Anrak? Alright, I guess uh thank you, Anrak, uh for your presentation and I think this is the last presentation of this session. And with this, we conclude the regular session two, N O C modeling and security. Yep, thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Very good. Yeah, no, Abhijit, please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I was just calling you to go ahead for the closing of day one.
Okay. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for attending today. Tomorrow, we have a lot of more very interesting uh presentations. Starting by the keynote with the keynote of Bill Dali. Uh first thing in the in the morning, afternoon or evening and then with very interesting technical sessions, special session and then the panel to. Before the closing of the of the symposium where we will announce the best paper award. Mikael, do you have any remark to do? So if that's all, thank you very much. See you tomorrow, two P M UTC.